We'd like to welcome you to the South Bend Common Council meeting tonight. And to start us off, we would have my invitation by Councilwoman Karen Block.
My name is everyone.
State Portfield.
A state here?
I didn't even see, I'm sorry.
Oh, good.
Thank you. That is important, thank you. Um, Captain Portfield, did you jump for it? Thank you. Apologize.
Thus thou art hence in great for last lesson. Thus the Lord built a house in vain through the builders labor. All in thy mercy for everybody God, we do our laws and everywhere to give you thanks. For it is in your Holy Spirit that each of us live and live and have our very being. Every day you show us the love of our own parents. You never cease to cause to live more abundant life. All things of your making, all times and seasons obey your laws. You chose to create us in your own image, sent us over the whole world in all its wonder. You made us, your daughters and sons, the stewards of creation. We pray that all of our deliberations, discussions, and decisions here this evening may be guided by the wisdom and understanding of your Holy Spirit. May all of our work promote the common good of the citizens of South Bend, who are elected us as their representatives. May all our efforts acknowledge your honor and glory. Make us mindful, Lord, dear God, that it is you who have accomplished all that we have done. Amen.
(Inaudible)
We'd like now for our city clerk to please take a row. Mr. Scott. Mr. Shay. Uh, Dr. Ferwick. Uh, President Davis. Uh, Dr. Brenner. Uh, Mr. Ferwick.
Three.
And Mr. Dieter, Vice President Dieter.
I'm here.
Vice Councilmember.
Clinton.
Eight present.
Thank you. Under our special business, we would like to announce again, um, that we are extending the applications for, uh, Animal Control Commission and the MBE, WBE, um, utilization board. The deadline is now September 5th. That's be on Friday. Interviews will be held that Monday on September the 8th.
That's at noon, uh, September 5th.
Thank you. What time the interviews that date?
Uh, we'll know closer to that date. That is a very hot possibility.
Okay, and then that would be publicized within normal times. Okay, thank you. Now we'd like to ask city clerk to please read Resolution 17 of the Subcommittee of Minutes.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Report for the Subcommittee of Minutes. Uh, the minutes of the Subcommittee have been, uh, read, approved, and signed by, uh, David Barnes and, um, Alvin and President Davis. Uh, the minutes of the last meeting, which would have been, I'm sorry, I don't have that problem. I was trying to break up here, but, uh, eight fourteen anyway, eight fourteen.
And you, that we accept the Subcommittee report on minutes?
I accept that.
You mean eight eleven?
You mean eight eleven. Whatever. Okay. What? Okay. Alvin, say. It is the first one. Okay. Now we can report. Fourteen seventy-eight. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, publicly commending and honoring May Lee Johnson for the many contributions she has made to our community as a gifted journalist. Okay, at this time, we'd like to ask Ms. May Lee Johnson and her guests, who she brought with her tonight, please come forth.
The Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend publicly commending and honoring May Lee Johnson for the many contribution, contributions she has made to our community as a gifted journalist. Whereas the South Bend Common Council notes that one of South Bend's residents, who graduated from St. Joe High School at Indiana University, South Bend, began her journalism career with the South Bend Tribune in nineteen ninety-five, when she began inserting in the Tribune's basement, and whereas the Common Council further notes that May Lee Johnson later began working in camp marked plate making and later carriage. And in two thousand and two, May Lee was brought upstairs and given the opportunity to write and to tap into the many journalistic talents. And whereas May Lee's talents of West Side, let it notice tales, were just the beginning of an award-winning South Bend Tribune series which focused on our West community. And whereas May Lee captured the stories and voices of May from her writing, R and the Code, The Faces of Need, where she focused on the real life experiences of individuals who had their feet turned off during the winter, which resulted in such awareness that policies were changed so that such utilities service could not be turned off until April, rather than in, uh, the dead of winter, to be a reporter for today's Catholic, where she covered news in South Bend and Chiwaka, as well as local black Catholics community. And whereas May Lee also put in the spotlight on many local seniors who participated in the senior Olympics, who were given the chance to play and laugh during their golden years. And whereas May Lee's article, Students Embarked on Civil Rights Bus Tour, was published on August 9th, two thousand and fourteen. It brought to life the energy and enthusiasm of IU South Bend college students, as study freshman experience historic civil rights sites on a bus tour, which has been part of the Southern Leadership Academy since two thousand and two, so that the history of the block and Chicago civil rights movements could be shared. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section one, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, publicly honors and thanks May Lee Johnson for her many insights and writings which focused on many topics and created a new opportunity for discussion which may not have otherwise taken place. Section two, the Common Council wishes May Lee Johnson her true success and hopes that her life will continue to be enriched with bold new experiences with her family as she begins a new chapter when she reappears to Arizona, where many new adventures await to be embraced and experienced. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the council and approval by the mayor. At this time, we would just like to ask members of our council to share their thoughts and comments.
As a, uh, journalism graduate and working journalism past May Lee, thank you for all your articles and thank you for, uh, the neighborhoods that you reported on.
Thank you.
As the fourth leg of the government, as they call the media, I'm so thankful for all that, um, you and your colleagues to, to keep our citizens informed and engaged of, um, what is going on with their government. So thank you for your dedication to your field.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've made our city better.
Thank you.
Just wishes in your retirement, I'm endeavored to thank you for shoveling any snow.
I would like to thank May Lee, uh, and I appreciate all the work that she has done in the community, and there's a lot of people that don't know, but I appreciate people who are out on the street, people who go, uh, to the heart of the matter in, in the community, and of all the journalists I've known for a long, long time, a lot of them can, uh, sit in their offices and, and try to write stories, but you're one that goes right, right to the, to the heart of the matter. So I appreciate all the years that you've done that. It's, uh, a very unique talent you have of being able to get the information firsthand, and to convey that, uh, to the paper, I think is, uh, you'd be so remiss, so I appreciate all the years you've done, a lot of great things on, uh, just not the West Side or all of us up in, and I don't think people, until they're there, can really appreciate what you've done, but I've been there and I really appreciate all of the good things. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, May Lee. I always enjoyed your work and certainly will be missed. Thanks.
I would like to personally thank Ms. Johnson. Uh, I first, um, became aware and worked with May Lee when she was a young lady. Uh, we attended the same church, we're from the lake, as it's called, and I've had the pleasure of having her as a student at IU South Bend. So I appreciate your dedication, your commitment to the work, and the love of excellence that you have established, not only for yourself, but for the South Bend Tribune. I cannot tell you the number of individuals who have contacted me, asking in regards to the tales of the West Side. You have brought a very positive, uh, perception in regards to the stories and individuals that you have covered. And just here lately, I've had the opportunity of having, uh, Ms. Johnson work with me for our Leadership Academy, and the students are still asking if you're going to come back. So again, um, wonderful work, excellent writer, and you will be very, very much missed as you venture towards, uh, Arizona.
She has also brought some guests with her tonight. Would you like to share?
Uh, this is my daughter. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, wait, before I did this, catch up. Yes, for him. Um, first of all, let me say thank you to you guys. Mr. Ford, I have written many times about your lovely daughter. Gavin, we sat around the table and did many chats. Lady Annie came to my house and scared the heck out of me. She thought you were coming to Westside. You were writing, we brought her some books. Dr. Ferwick, you made sure to cut down the big weeds and all the grass in May's house looked terrible. You ran through there and you took a picture of it, and then next thing I knew, there were pomegranate on there. And I didn't know you, but I know you're a happy, all the wonderful things that she has done. I just wanted to share a little story about Karen and myself. Today was a really, really tough day because I woke up and I was like, you know, what am I going to do? And things just started out horrible from ground one. And Andy had gone to school, sister was at work, and I went to Karen to deliver something. And it reminded me of in nineteen sixty-eight, I had flunked in Halle two times, and it was what I needed to graduate with general studies. I just about did it, so I went to Karen and I said, Karen, I, I can't take it, I don't know this stuff, and I'm just going crazy. And she said, May Lee, just go, settle down, take the test. And I passed it. And I was too sick to go to graduation, but eventually, I was at home that day and they bring me a letter, and it was that red diploma that's from my USB. And today, again, she captured my fallen spirit and lifted me back up and reminded me that I, there's still a lot of fire in this furnace. You know, there is light after this happening, Tracy. I thank the top of the tree for everything that they've done for me, because I would not really be who I am without them, but they would not be who they are without me. So, I feel a lot of harm in both ways. And I think, again, I'm living here another year, we be doing different things, I'm waiting for Annie to graduate from St. Joe High School, and then after she decides what college she wants to go to, I'm headed out to Chandler to take care of my grandson, I haven't seen him for five years, and hopefully, I'm starting to do this lung disease and the air will make it a little better for me to breathe, but I'll always bring South Bend, I'm a product of here, and this helps me step out on another journey. I don't call it retirement, I call it transitioning. So transitioning to the next thing, and without Sister Sue, who says, shut up, you know, this can't take anymore, and reminding me that you brush yourself off and you get back on the bus. So I thank you guys, because you have a gift to them, they know me, by being recognized by you, it's a done deal. Thank you so much.
It's truly an honor to recognize such an outstanding person in our community, and we have a few more months with her as she awaits for the graduation. I'm quite surprised the council moved her adoption. I'll take it. It is Karen. Fourteen seventy-nine. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, publicly commending and honoring the South Bend East Side All-Star Team for a great district tournament and a great twenty-fourteen season. Thank you. President Ferwick.
Thank you. Uh, read the resolution. Uh, whereas the rich and enduring history of baseball dates back to the soldiers of the Continental Army, playing volleyball at valley fours during the American Revolution. With the first organized baseball league for boys being founded by Carmy Stotts of Goldenport, Pennsylvania, in nineteen thirty-nine, when thirty dollars was donated to purchase uniforms for each of the first three teams, with the sport instantly capturing the thrill and excitement of youth and our country. And whereas the South Bend Common Council notes that the East Side opened their gates in order to provide opportunities for boys and girls ages five through eighteen, a place to play baseball and softball. East Side is located on Hickory Road, just one thirty mile north of the Edison-Hickory intersection, is located in the Ford Councilman district, and is affiliated with the Bay Ruth League International and the Calhoun baseball division. And whereas the City of South Bend, Indiana, has a very proud and long history of Little League Baseball, where a play ball has been shouted for many decades at the beginning of each new season. And whereas the Common Council is especially proud to recognize the members of the South Bend East Side U-11 All-Star Team, who played this year in six tournaments, winning five of them, with the team compiling a twenty-five and one record, with its only one loss coming in the championship game of the Mid-Rush Regional held in Lexington, Kentucky. And whereas, on behalf of our entire community, the South Bend Common Council is honored to recognize each of the players, coaches, and manager of the two thousand and fourteen East Side U-11 All-Star Team and their values. Their values being teamwork, community, character, and integrity, and the members being Josh Allen, Michael Burns, Ray Calhoun, Diego Cardenas, Matt Eck, Colin Hayes, Caleb Clay, Kyle Riffle, Peter O'Shea, Raymond Sligher, Chikar Watkins, Mason Welty, Leon Eck, Jason Jeff Lay, coach, I'm sorry, Leon Eck is a coach as well, Matt Wurdeka, coach, and Jim Wine, manager. Now, that will be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana. Section one, the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, publicly honors each of the players, coaches, and managers of the East Side U-11 All-Star Team, who won the District Seven Championship and were section three runner-up, with a very special thanks to all the parents, volunteers, friends, and sponsors who donated their time, resources, and guidance to make this a great season, which created lifetime memories for so many. Section two, the council recognizes that each of the members of this East Side team represent a city with sportsmanship and class, as epitomized by being humble in victory and gracious in defeat. Congratulations. Section three, this resolution shall be in full, full force and effect from and after its adoption by the council and approval by the mayor. Round of applause for this team.
Speaking on behalf of East Side Youth Baseball, I want to thank the council for recognizing us, especially Councilman Ferwick, he did a wonderful job. I put some of these words together, but he's the one that ran with it. I'm not, I'm not nearly that good. And it was so quiet as well, I was coaching that first team back in the war, and these guys probably think I, I did. Wonderful group of kids, wherever we go, whether it's in the state of Indiana or out of the state of Indiana, everybody comments, hey, those kids really act like young gentlemen. On and off the field, it's truly a privilege to coach these kids. They're, in many ways, they're, they're old school, and they really, if, if this, excuse what I'm saying, but they really get it, what, what it takes to, to be a ball player and to be a good citizen. Um, they never, ever, ever let me down, whatever I've taken these kids. And then, that's, I've been in this for fifty-three years, in one form or another, so trust me, that's where, especially in today's group. Uh, I want to thank all the parents, they, without them, none of this happens, especially James Burns, with his help with all this. My coaches, Leon Eck, Jeff Lay, and Matt Wurdeka, it was Wurdeka, so, uh, I don't, um, at Indiana University, furthering his education. All these guys, none of this happens without them. I'm, I'm just a cog in all of this. This team, no egos, no awkward. It, it's, it's just truly is a pleasure and a privilege to coach these young men. If you indulge me, this is, uh, I'd like to say a little bit about each child, if you, if you may, if I may. This is Colin Hayes. Colin Hayes is an interesting ball player. He's a process, buddy. (Inaudible). Colin pitches balls, he plays some first base, he plays third base, and he's turned into one heck of a hitter. Thank you, Colin. This is Matt. Matt, uh, primary catches. He's got the meter, that's for, that's for foul anyway, but the kid's one heck of a catcher, and he's come along, plays some out in force, too, and he might occasionally pitch if we're really dire. This is Mason Wobbe. Mason Wobbe is the, the guy that keeps it real for all of us. He's always, he's always got a smile, always got a joke, one heck of an outfielder, and a pretty darn good hitter, too. We use him in the outfield, we use him as an extra hitter, he wants to pitch, but, uh, well, we have to get a lot of bases. Chikar. Chikar Watkins. Chikar plays shortstop, and pretty much every shortstop, and the reason for that, he would be the best shortstop I've ever seen. He's just a phenomenal, gifted, natural athlete. Is he perfect? Long way to go. Needs a lot of work, but, uh, he, he's, uh, really a gifted shortstop. He's turned into a, when he hit us, he was a, uh, a slap hitter, like softball slap hitter. Somehow along the way, his dad invested in him, he was a power hitter with speed. And in the championship Sunday, uh, semifinals, he was a leadoff hitter and opened up with home run. So he truly is, he truly has turned into a power hitter. Thanks, Chikar. This is Carlos Speedy Revolt. He plays outfield force, um, one of the fastest kids on the team, nice hitter, he normally bats in the, uh, what we call our second leadoff, which would be the, the last batter, to set up for the top of your, because his on-base percentage is so high. And once he gets on bases, forget it, he's gone. This is Michael Burns. Now, Michael Burns gives us a lot of different things. He catches balls, plays outfield force, plays little third base force, occasionally pitches force, and doggone it, he hasn't turned into a bit of a power hitter. In the last tournament, the championship game, he was a grand slam home run. Wow. Yeah. Thank you, Michael. What's your name again? Oh. Uh, no, he's not my son, because he has a right hand, I'm sorry. This is Willie Calhoun. Willie Calhoun is a first baseman, and one heck of a left-handed pitcher. And when he gets mad, and he wants to hit the ball, he's a fine hitter, too. Need to work on our body a little bit, but we'll get there. But he really gives us a, a flyer that, uh, this team needs. Thanks, Rick. This is Josh Allen, and no, he doesn't drive the bus, he only, only go to places. He, 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 You know, people ask me, they said, how can you play Caleb Lloyd as your centerfielder? He's not particularly fast, he's athletic, and I find him back to when I first started with these kids at Dune. We were playing in our very first term, and in the championship game, Caleb went diving catch on a line drive, on a sinking line drive, to save the tournament for us. We won that tournament, by the way. And anybody ask me anything about that, I just say, that's why. He's truly gifted when it comes to reading the ball and reacting, and a pretty good little hitter, too. And we lost two, don't stay going good. That's the weakest part of our game. Fine. Thanks. Are you last? You're last one? Good, I'm going to give you the last. Diego Carlos. Now, Diego gives this team something that every team has to have. Now, pay attention to what I'm saying here. He pitches, he plays first base, he plays second base, he plays shortstop, he plays third base, and he plays in the outfield. We lived his catch, and that's probably because I never put him back there. A true utility player, and we don't miss a beat wherever he goes. And that is so where, and I told you before how important that is to this team, and how important you are to this team, and not unless you're a good hitter. That's why I wanted you to be last, because you do a lot. Thank you very much. This is Leon Agg, and this is Jeff Lloyd. Without them, again, we don't function. Thank you very much.
Just a little pause, that's just absolutely amazing, and you guys, bless you all, good job what you did, and hopefully we see you guys back up here.
Great job, guys. Keep it up.
All I can say is, wow, Coach. Love coaching. What I heard tonight, you're the ultimate mentor and your coaches. I mean, this was just, I was starstruck by your love of the game, the love of your players, and the respect show for them, and you say thank you. I mean, you are truly a role model for all of us. Thank you for all you did.
I really appreciate it, Coach, the way you described each person, and your passion that you described them with, and, you know, I really, that was amazing to me. And when I think about your league, and talking about Cal Ripley, I think the way that he played the ball, I was watching him, how steady he was when he was going for that record. I remember that as a kid. And the way, the passing and the professionalism that he brought to the game of baseball is what I see these young men doing, so I really think that models the behavior.
I watched in Chicago over the weekend, and there was a lot of the food we had. They're really, he posts, something quite astonishing and astonishing, too, so congratulations to you all. And I want to say something about the coach, too, I think after Furlik getting a good job, but the fact of the matter is, I think you found your comfort zone. You're right, we've had, and the kids, congratulations, all.
First of all, great job by all the young men. I've been in this, the position of the coach, all my sons were named after baseball players. Actually, the middle son, they went with Chet Wagner and advanced very far in the same U-11 a long, long time ago. Seems like a long time ago, wasn't that part? But I want to tell all you players, when you get home tonight, to thank your parents, your grandparents, your aunts and uncles, of all the people who helped you get here by buying that new bat that you had to have, or the new glove, or the necklaces, or the batting gloves, the shoes, the underarmour, everything that you guys want when a new East Bay comes in, or catalog, that you have to have. But it's paid off, so again, when you go home, thank your parents, aunts, uncles, everybody that helped you get to where you are. We've got some great coaches, you've got some great leaders, so I hope all of you continue playing baseball. It's a great sport, you can do a lot with it in your life, even if you don't go on the professional ball. But again, that's a lot of work, a lot of fun, and like I said, you've got some great coaches, mentors, so congratulations, and we hope to see you at the next level along the way, so good job.
I just like to add my words of thank you and congratulations. Truly, it's beyond the sport, but you've had the opportunity to touch and pour into the lives of these young men, and for that, we are so grateful to the young men. I know that school has started, we expect excellent grades from you. I will contact the coach to get a great report at the end of this semester, but again, thank you so much, and congratulations again.
You're welcome. I'll say a lot of applause.
So, favor, say aye. I'm ready. Yeah. I'm ready.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Absolutely. Great. Thank you. 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 I was going to be very quick to say just two things. One, just to remind everyone about the budget meetings, the most Mondays and Wednesdays that are not on council Mondays for the next four weeks or so. I know that Councilman Boucher is part of the personal finance committee, working with City Clerk John Murphy, has set up a public meeting on September twenty-fourth at the O'Brien Center, and I know they're looking for a second date as well, and a public meeting to fill the entire budget. So as soon as that gets finalized, we'll be sure to publish that and maybe have a release on the public meetings this year, all the community, we got enough budget. And then secondly, I just want to promote that this week is the last week of regular season at Fullland Field at the Cove, and I know that the team's working hard, Joe Hart and all these folks are working hard to beat the attendance record. I think tomorrow night is both park at the park, as well as pack the park, so it's going to be a very crowded scene, with a lot of dogs as well. And a great deal's already just in promoting, and we're trying to break the record. I think we need to average another thirty-five hundred or so per game this week to make it, so that was one of the other items. So thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. All right. Motion to resolve this committee vote? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. It's carried.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the council sits at the committee. Proposed ordinances are read by title only by City Clerk John Wardy. Reports are then verbally given by chairperson of the council standing committee to which the proposed ordinance was sent for advisory review and recommendation. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member of area plan will be given. In all of the situations, a formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report and then the formal presentation followed by a public hearing. We do ask that everyone turn off their cell phones for the remainder of this meeting. There are additional rules and agendas on the desk at the doorway if you need copies. I now will ask City Clerk John Wardy to read Bill forty-one fourteen.
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending sections of chapter nine, article three of the South Bend Municipal Code to address ambulance slash medical service fees.
Thank you.
Want you to hear the second substitute?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll vote in favor in case I say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. And we now have a committee report come to help in favor.
Send to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, and we have a presenter.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Stephen Cox, fire chief of the South Bend Fire Department at twelve twenty-two South Michigan Street. The proposal in front of you is basically a request of the council to increase the ambulance user fees in association with the increase in reimbursable rates by the Office of Medicare, which is released yearly. Basically, the fire department has not requested to increase these, well, let me change that. We have requested to increase these rates pretty much yearly over the last five years or so. However, they have not been increased since the beginning of 2013. Since that time, there have been two separate Medicare increases and allowable reimburseables to the fire department that have gone by. Basically, what we're asking is that we are able to amend the ordinance so that way we can basically reap the benefits of those Medicare increases. Additionally, within this proposal, is a change in the way we report to the council in regards to the ambulance user fees and reimburseables that we collect yearly, from a reported date of September first to June first, and also that we would report instead of a partial year, the entire previous year. That way, the council has a date set from an entire year's worth of reimbursements for EMS fees.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Counsel. Are there any questions for Chief Counsel?
Negative.
Meaning, none? Thank you, we will now open questions to the public. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the second substitute bill forty-one fourteen? If so, please come to the podium, share your name and address. Seeing no one, I now provide the opportunity for anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the second substitute bill forty-one fourteen. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. Seeing no one, I will now close the public portion. Council, what is your question?
Favorable recommendation.
And a motion and a second. I'll vote in favor in case I say aye. I'm opposed. The second substitute bill forty-one fourteen will go to the full council with a favorable recommendation, saying I have a motion to...
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll vote in favor in case I say aye. I oppose, motion carries.
The full council is now back in session. We'd like for Speaker Wardy to read Bill forty-one fourteen.
Further reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending sections of chapter nine, article three of the South Bend Municipal Code to address ambulance slash medical service fees.
Motion to amend this...
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Please carry it. Message of the Metroverde.
Second.
Mr. Wardy, would you please pick her up?
Mr. Scott, aye. Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furlik?
Aye.
Dr. Butler?
Aye.
Vice President Dehar?
Mr. Furlik?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Davis?
Aye.
That would be aye, aye.
Thank you. Now, we would now ask Mr. Wardy to please read bill number forty-three fourteen.
First reading on a bill of the city of South Bend, Indiana, levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the civil city of South Bend for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2015.
Okay, what is Council President?
I make a motion to send bill forty-three fourteen to the personnel and finance committee for... Jackie, do we, would we...
We need a public hearing on September twenty-second and third reading on October thirteenth.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Please carry it. Mr. Wardy, would you have further reading for bill forty-four fourteen?
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of several departments of the civil city of South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year beginning January one, 2015, and ending December thirty-first, 2015, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing a time when the same shall take effect.
Council President?
Council attorney, there, I'll be saying December twenty-second?
Yeah.
For the second public hearing. Okay. I make a motion to send bill forty-four fourteen to the personnel and finance committee for the second and third reading on...
Second.
Second reading and public hearing. Second reading and public hearing on September twenty-second.
And third reading on October thirteenth.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Please carry it. Do we now have fourth reading for bill forty-five fourteen?
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating monies for the purpose of defraying the expenses of the designated enterprise funds of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for fiscal year beginning January one, 2015, and ending December thirty-first, 2015, including all outstanding claims and obligations, and fixing a time when the same shall take effect.
Thank you. What's the council question?
Make a motion to send bill forty-five fourteen to the personnel and finance committee for a second reading and a public hearing on September twenty-second, followed by a third reading on October third.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. Please carry it. Now, first reading for bill forty-six fourteen.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting, and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's 2015 budget, and levying the tax and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2015.
Make a motion to send bill forty-six fourteen to the personnel and finance committee for a second reading and public hearing on September twenty-second, followed by a third reading on October third.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Please carry it. Now, we need to have a motion regarding the bill fourteen seventy-six to send out to the zoning administration on nine eighteen fourteen. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please carry it. We need this, actually, under...
Yes, at the previous meeting, October eleventh. There was an inquiry made by a citizen...
Office?
I'm sorry, office, but there was a... Didn't say what I was saying. There was an inquiry made by a citizen regarding the status of complaints which have been filed, or record complaints which have been filed. I can't say, a council member. I will bring everyone up to date on that. As of today, there had been three filed. One was unsigned and is such will not be addressed because it was signed by the committee. One was out of the city, we do not, we recognize the blank file balance sheet, but we do not address them. The third one was actually brought to the council by the LA who made the inquiry. It will not be addressed at this time because she said she's chosen not to pursue it at this time. So at this point in time, there are no, there's no action in the Rules Committee regarding any of the complaints as regards the status of complaints.
Thank you, Professor. Any other new business for this time?
Under new business, I would like to bring up two topics that I think warrant additional council discussion. As many council members may know, the TIF districts are going to be realigned. As one of your redevelopment commission representatives, I do want there to be some discussion amongst council. This Thursday, the redevelopment commission will be asked to approve a declaratory resolution on the realignment of these districts. I'll be happy to forward the topic that I have received, but I would like, as one of your representatives, I would like some input from council on the proposed realignment of the TIF districts, as I feel that that's a very significant decision for us to make. The other thing that was, I had thought was going to be on the redevelopment agenda, but I do not see it, is the STEM funding. There was a lot of discussion at the last redevelopment commission meeting about Project Lead the Way Forward. I, as a member of the redevelopment commission, I am very supportive of the STEM initiatives, but I have some real concerns about using TIF dollars for infrastructure costs. I guess I will ask, because I would like council's opinion on this, so that I'm representing the council. Scott, it seems like it's been removed from this Thursday's agenda. Are we going to be discussing the STEM program this Thursday?
Okay.
Please, I'm sorry, yes.
I don't think this is okay for discussion.
Scott Ford, Office of the Murphy floor. I appreciate clarification on two funds for redevelopment. We will not be discussing Project Lead the Way this week. There is, the school corporation's attorneys wanted to, additional time to put together the papers for that, and when that meeting occurs, certainly hear about it. As we discuss on email, make sure that you're there for clarification on that. To the point about the TIF, I may, that this Thursday is just the initiative declaratory resolution. It will come before the APC, as well as it'll come before council, before it goes back to redevelopment October for a public hearing, so there'll be multiple opportunities for public input, but it'll very specifically come in front of this council, I believe, in September.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I did just want to make it a matter of public record, because this could impact a lot of, a lot of people and a lot of businesses, so thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
If not, I would like to thank Councilwoman Karen White for giving me her comments regarding the transfer meeting. Those of you who have any others, please ship them over to me, and I'm good, and you know, tomorrow's meeting is tomorrow. All right. That's all, I'm finished. I'm privileged in the court. If you please, I'll sign those in the privileged court.
Yes, sir. I'll give you more later next morning. Jesse Davis, P.O., Boston, two oh five, South Bend. I have two things worry for you. Number one, the first thing is, I had some questions about the nuisance ordinance that was passed. I have some family and friends that live over off Portage Avenue, and it seems even when I drive through that area, which is frequently, I see a lot of police cars that franks on the corner of, I think it's Portage and Marion, with their lights on, daytime, nighttime. So I was kind of curious, we've heard a lot of things in the news... So I was kind of curious, we've heard a lot of things in the news about Courtyard Place and some other places that have had many police calls that were, you know, added to this nuisance list or whatever. Not heard anything about franks over there, so I'm kind of curious if somebody can find out how many calls have been at that place in the last 12 months? And have they been added to the nuisance list? Just, just kind of curious. And I did do a, do a flaw for that. And also, when I came in here about the sidewalk program, I believe at the last meeting, mysteriously enough, these people had waited 18 months, very happy they had a crew out there working on their sidewalks this week. The thing I have a little question about is the money being spent. Those are local tax dollars. I would think they should have some stipulations that local contractors, or maybe minority contractors, would get that work. And when I go by and saw the work being performed, it's being performed by a company called Premium Concrete, and they're actually out of Elkhart, Tennessee. So I wasn't sure why we are using a contractor from out of San Joe County, more or less out of South Bend, to take funds out of our city. So I do have a copy of the webpage listing with their address in Elkhart, and also the Secretary of State's listing of this company, how long they've been around. And I would like you to take a look into that and find out why we don't have local contractors handling that sidewalk program since it is local tax dollars.
Thank you. Next?
Senator Brown, Representative in Simpson United for Better Government, 222 East Navarre Street, in the city of South Bend. The one thing that really disturbs me is that we had two councilmen to sit on this council, and it was talking about the park rangers. And one was for it, and one was against it, and it said that we want to disarm the park rangers, and that our parks are safe. I know we got the police department, they got a dangerous job out there in the streets of South Bend, but the park rangers also got a dangerous job. They go to lock them bathrooms and stuff, they gotta cause a lot of stuff in them parks. And I really feel in my heart that if those guys are gonna be out there and putting live in line, they should be armed, because those parks are dangerous. If you don't think they're dangerous, let some guy volunteer to go out there and do the jobs, and they'll be running, try to get a hand down. And I don't really know where and who got the power. Park rangers, they don't have the power, they're overturners. I don't know where to go, but I'm gonna find out. Those guys should be armed. The city can't send them to the police department because they're not policemen. But they should be armed. Those parks are not safe for those guys to be out there without a firearm, doing the jobs they do.
Thank you. Same on the meeting, Mr.?